Thank you. Okay, roll call, Debbie.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Fullick?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we'll need a motion of the council for Councilmember Corey to participate remotely.
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote please, Debbie.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Here.
Councilman, aye?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fullick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Arlene. Approval of the agenda, I don't think we need any changes there. Okay. Mayors, welcome, well, thank you all for coming. We appreciate your time, we need your input. We don't know everything, and you all, we all work for you. We're servants to the people. Believe it or not, we are servants to the people. Sometimes we forget that. We think, oh, boy, we got elected office, and now we, you know, it's something else. But we're all just servants to the people. We love our jobs, we love Benita, so, thank you so much for coming. What's that? We have a public comment on anything except 10A and 11A.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Ben Hirschenstein, Avenue Drive. Just a little quickie this evening. There's an item on the agenda, I believe it is item nine, and that's discussion of potential ordinance to prohibit through trucks along the Old Forty-One corridor. I won't go into any suggestions specifically, that's-
Food trucks.
Yeah, food, well, it says trucks. Here, I'm just reading from here. Anyway, the bottom line for me-
True, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. The bottom line for me is that, rather than getting into any specifics, it's too early, I just support that. I mean, it's good to have a study to find out what the options are, and so I would hope the council members would seriously give this some thought. All kinds of problems fraught with that, I know there is, but there's also some good areas as well, so, I'm just simply adding a positive recommendation that at least it be studied to see whether or not it is feasible. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Ben. Anybody else comment? Okay, we'll move along to consent agenda. We have a lot of consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fullick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Very good, very good, moving right along. Okay, we're down to 9A, which Ben brought up. I came up with a little idea, just a little while ago. We need deliveries to the businesses that are on Old Forty-One, and these come in trucks. Everything seems to move in trucks anymore. So, why don't we issue a sticker pass to all the people that need to deliver stuff on Old Forty-One? That would separate them from the other, from all the other trucks that-
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, is this item your item, or I thought it was Deputy-
Fred's, yeah, but I just throw that in there. Okay, Fred.
Yeah, the motion is much simpler than it would have been at the last week when I agreed to green-sheet it. I want to point out, before we get into, I did talk to Greg DeWitt, Chief of the Fire Department. He supports this motion enthusiastically. I think, and the staff can look at the idea the mayor had, so I would make a motion that we do just what's on the green sheet, which is let the staff look at this, come back with recommendations on whether or not to make the corridor of Old Forty-One prohibit through trucks on it. Not interfering with trucks that have to make a delivery to homes or to businesses.
Second.
Any other comments? I had that one comment about stickers for the people that are going to deliver trucks.
I think that should be looked at by staff.
I mean, we have a very competent staff. I've checked out the map, and I can't figure out a way to send them any other way to, I want to find, I'd like to know how Collier County handled the trucks going down Logan, because that was a problem we had for the city, and all of a sudden, Collier County put some sort of sign up. I don't know what they did, but they seemed to have taken care of that.
I can answer that, because that's out in my district. Basically, because it's Collier, and there's more miles in Collier than there is Lee, the Collier County Sheriff predominantly is the one that enforces it.
Okay, any other comment? You got staff-
It has made a difference, too.
And they've started to enforce it.
Have to make a vote on that?
Yes, yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fullick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, our capital improvement budget, five-year capital improvement budget has to be approved for the state, requires it to be approved. It doesn't, it's not, it's not necessarily going to be done that way. I mean, it can be amended-
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to take a little bit on this. So, first, let me, it's a second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Council of Benita Springs, Florida, adopting the 22-23 five-year capital improvement program, annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. So, as a requirement of Chapter 163 in our comprehensive planning, we are obligated, along with other infrastructure-related and funding-related portions of our budget, to lay out how we intend to move forward certain capital planning projects on a five-year basis. And so, those projects that are listed, we update our comprehensive plan to list them and to indicate that they are funded. So, in the past, there have been communities that would list projects, but they weren't funded projects, and so therefore, in your planning documents, when you have developments or other projects moving along, they cannot rely on those assertions that those projects will be completed. So, the purpose of adding the five-year requirement and showing actually funded projects is to say, for instance, if we were to be widening a part of Old Forty-One, then projects along that way would understand that that road is going to be widened, it'd be taken into account with respect to their development, their impact fees, et cetera. So, that is the purpose of updating this on a regular basis. But the priorities, the items listed, you've already, these are already been adopted in your budget. This is just something we're doing to meet state requirements.
Okay, and, since ones that are under construction, they're, the money's there for those?
Correct.
I think what you were referring to, Mayor, is it does not prohibit the council in the
future to make amendments to the capital improvements plan as well. You have that opportunity, and we'll begin a series of workshops in the spring on that so that you can begin to reprioritize those, based on decisions we need to make in regards to Hurricane Ian.
Right.
Great. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we now open it up to the public, if there's any public comment. Seeing none.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fullick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, 11, is it 11A, reading?
Yes, this is the, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs authorizing the lease of a portion of real property within the Lightner Neighborhood Parks, the Cafe of Life, and providing for effective date. Earlier this year, you heard a request from Cafe of Life under their lease to extend, because the length of the lease and the valuation of the lease, we are required to adopt an ordinance for our chapter. So, this is just the first reading of that ordinance, and we would ask that maybe the Cafe of Life comes back at the second reading and be able to speak on it further.
Move to- Second.
Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fullick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Well, very good. Now, we have the city manager's report. You're going to introduce-
Thank you.
12A, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. This is discussion regarding the proposals received for RFP 22-12, State Legislative and Executive Branch Lobbying Services, and direction to staff. Earlier today, you received presentations from the four proposers. Each of them have met the minimum qualifications of the proposal period. Council did choose to hear the presentations and then provide an opportunity for questions and answers. As you are the ranking authority in decision-making in this process, we have an opportunity for you either to decide you would like to make a motion to select a firm, or we have ballots prepared for you for your use. The ballots are public record, and what the suggestion we have is that, should you choose to use the ballots, what we would do is have you just mark, we have enough ballots, just on the first round, mark your number one, so we're clear of how many votes we have for each applicant, so.
I move we go with the ballots.
Second.
Roll call, please. Any other comment?
Will we have the results tonight, or are we going to-
You're going to have the results tonight, and secondly, also, this is your opportunity to discuss amongst yourselves as well, but secondly, if it's clear in the decision-making process this evening, I would probably respectfully ask that you authorize your staff to be, to work out the negotiations in the contract and permit the mayor to sign that contract with the terms under the proposal, which is a three-year contract with the opportunity for two additional one-year renewals at the project price that they proposed in each of their proposals, so that we would be set to go with the committee meetings that are going to be coming up at the beginning of January. We also know that our appropriations are due in February, and we've heard from State Representative Botina that he would like any appropriations request as soon as possible so that he can start on that process, too.
Okay, any discussion of the presentations, Fred?
No, I was just going to ask a question about the ballot. All you want us to do is fill in the number one.
Just number one and put your name on the ballot.
See if we have a majority, and then-
Correct.
And then we would ask, that at least you have a secondary one?
At a minimum.
Because if, for some reason, the next few months there's an issue, you have someone to go back to immediately without an RFP.
Okay. Any other comments about the presentation? I see none, so, vote.
And you'll turn those into Carly and Debbie. And you do, I just want to clarify, you do need to put your name on the ballot.
I gave you a second.
Oh, just-
Just mark your first choice for now.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Your first choice.
I can do that.
Just for the record-
Yeah, just pass them down, if you could.
Yep, and for the record, Councilmember Corey is emailing his, so we will have a recorded record of his as well.
I got it.
Sorry.
And then we got a-
Yeah, just a second.
So, like, is this its highest?
Well, there would be for the second choice, if there's no clear second choice. So, if the vote comes out on this first round, four, three, with two top contenders, you're done. If, for instance, it was three and two and two, or three and any, or two and any other, we may have additional rounds. So, you have additional ballots for additional rounds.
Whatever.
This was faster than the other process, we hoped.
We're better than the NCAA.
We have brackets. Are we missing any? Yep. Could you guys pass yours out?
I'm thinking. Oh, and did Chris, did Chris email this? Yeah, it should be.
He's just better service than this.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and read out the first- Okay, so it's four for Greenberg, three for Gray Robinson. All right.
So, is that our one and two?
That's our one and two.
That's our one and two. And then, if you can't work it out, then you go to Robinson.
So, I think you need a motion to accept those results.
We would need a motion to accept the ballot.
I make a motion that we accept the ballot?
Second.
Any other comment? Vote, please.
Councilman Fullick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
You have the second ballot?
No, I, no, because of the results, you were able to have your first-ranked and your second-ranked firm, so we have two firms to work with.
Okay.
I would ask if there could be a motion, if you would permit staff to negotiate the contract and authorize the mayor to sign it in the interim between the next meeting, so that-
Don't move.
Second.
Any other comment? Vote, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fullick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
The next item, Community Development, John Dahmer is here to assist. If you recall, the legislature required that we not have a certain percentage of surplus for building permit fees. We did a reduction in those building permit fees, and we have reduced that line item significantly. It is set to sunset at the end of this year. This, letting it sunset, does not affect Hurricane Ian permits. Your city manager authorized, executed an executive order that waives all building permit fees in relation to recovery of Hurricane Ian. This would only be building permits that were not related to hurricane recovery. I'll let John add anything more.
How long does that go on?
It goes on, actually, we issued our last Hurricane Irma waiver about two weeks before Ian. So, depending on how it goes and how we progress, we could end it at any time, but-
Yeah, we can end it any time, but we want to be sensitive to supply chain issues, contractor issues, so, most likely, recovery is going to be long-term, and so if there's a clear delineation that it's a Hurricane Ian-related, we want to be able to take care of those folks that way.
And in fact, since we've done this, we've seen a pretty good reduction, and that was before Hurricane Ian and the fee waivers, so, we were still going to be in a position to recommend allowing this to sunset before now, but especially now, we believe it's a good idea.
So, I think it would be helpful if we had a motion on whether you'd like it to sunset, just so, it's not totally necessary, but then we have clear direction.
Second.
I have a motion, second.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fullick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Your next item is to appoint city council members as liaisons to your various boards and committees. What we may suggest is if Debbie could read each committee and then who the sitting liaison is, or whether there is a vacancy, whether that was former council member Caramba, or former council member Gibson, and then have some discussion. At the end, we can take one vote that clarifies each of the committees. And I think also, attached in the screen sheet, there was a question as to, we provided a list of the funding that we, each of the committees, external committees, that received, that did actually receive funding last fiscal year.
I have a question, please. Arlene, if you could clarify that again, we're going to vote on what, once we go through the committees, what are we going to vote on?
You're going to have one final vote. If you just, we can go through each line item, we don't need to vote at each committee. Who takes the committee? We'll have, we'll have a final list, and you'll make, you'll have one vote confirming the list.
So, should we do the ones that we think maybe we need to sort of sunset, or put on the table first?
Maybe it might be helpful if we go down the line of each one, and when we're on that one that someone has a concern about sunsetting, that would be the time to bring that up. Okay. So, Debbie, could you start at the top and then go through each one?
I got a question here, Arlene, now, did we accept the resignation on this vote?
Oh, so that, you did that during the consent agenda. So, the consent agenda, those are the actual committee members, you accepted resignations and appointments? Well, you had two separate green sheets. One was a resolution for, we had a couple of resignations. You had another, you had another green sheet that addressed terms of committee members and reappointments, and so those have already been approved. This is the council liaison position.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, yes. Okay, Deb.
Art and Public Places Committee was Amy Caramba.
So, we do have a vacancy.
Nigel?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Nigel?
You're going to go through each one.
Bicycle Pedestrian Facilities Committee?
That was Gibson, so again.
Councilman Gibson.
Are they going to decide, or do I?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have, does anyone-
Do you have someone who would like to?
You may nominate yourself.
Don't look at me. I'm not a bicycle person, I'm not, I don't have a level expertise there.
Are there any motions from the Florida nominee, anyone?
I'll do it if nobody else wants it. I don't, I'm not looking, looking to do it, but I'll do it.
Next meeting?
So, Fred, that would be?
Test it, yes.
Where do they meet typically? Conference?
They, they meet at the Lyles Hotel, I believe, but they could, we could talk with the location.
Yeah, okay.
Historic Preservation Board, Mayor Steinmeier and Councilwoman Carr.
No, I stepped off. So, it's just-
Yeah, I have the Historic Preservation Board.
Outreach Advisory Committee, Councilman Purdon.
Yep, I'm good.
Special Events Committee, Councilwoman Carr.
I'd like to stay on that.
And then we have Councilman Forbes as an alternate.
Maybe Jamie might want to be the alternate.
I would do it, if, but it's up to-
If you wanted to.
Fred?
It's a good trade, Fred.
You want to get off of that one?
This is a good, good trade, Fred, I'm serious.
It'd be fine.
Streetlight Committee, Councilman Corey.
That's fine.
Technology Advisory Board is Councilman Corey.
That's fine.
Tree Advisory Board is Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
I have Councilman Forbes as an alternate.
Tree Advisory Board? You want to give it to, do you want to give it to Nigel?
Somebody else would like to be on the tree.
Why do we need an alternate for the Tree Advisory Board?
I don't know, I'm always there.
Yeah, I'd be-
If you don't, if you would prefer not to be the alternate, that's fine, too. It was, I think it was, you had an interest at that time.
Yeah, I did, but it's okay.
But he realized it was horrible.
Okay, Veterans Advisory Committee, was Councilwoman, Councilwoman Caramba?
Veterans Advisory Committee? I would definitely like that, please.
Okay. And these are external committees? We have Agency and Bay Management, Councilwoman Carr.
That, I think, is dissolved. It's no longer meeting, no longer contacting, so.
So, part of the motion would be to remove this committee.
Part of the motion will be to remove this committee, please.
Second.
That's going to be part of the big, the final-
Part of the overall.
Oh, okay, got you, sorry.
Because the next one as well.
Bay and River?
It's still the- Let's clarify, yeah, I think there is some current invoice for one of those.
That's tripping.
Oh, coastal, yeah, I'm sorry, that's, yeah.
It's dissolved.
So, the two of them, yes, they don't meet, so we, so we can, part of the motion would be to remove those two committees.
Okay.
Blue Zone, was Councilwoman Caramba?
I would take that, if nobody wants it.
Do we need it, though?
I know, that's kind of what I was leaning towards, like, oh, we might in two or three years.
There are some meetings that participate, and we have, we have staff that participates.
Okay.
Okay, so Nigel wants it, great.
Board of County Commissioners, I have Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Benita Estero Economic Development Council, I had Councilwoman Caramba, and it was Councilman Purdon.
Yep, it's me, I'm good there.
Do we need to, I don't know.
There, no, we didn't, that was, that was the problem, was we had two, and then they wrote the letter saying they wanted me, and then she got mad, and then we had the fight, yeah, that's, no, just one.
Benita Springs Utilities, Councilwoman Carr.
I'd like to keep it.
Chamber of Commerce, Councilman Purdon.
Yep.
Do we have a Chamber of Commerce, though?
We need to retitle that to Southwest Florida.
Yeah, Southwest Florida Inc., but yes.
And how does that differ from the Benita Estero Economic Development Council?
Two different things. Southwest Florida Inc. is essentially what the Benita Chamber was, and the Economic Development Council is a different entity that focuses strictly on economic development.
Run by Southwest Florida Inc.?
Not run by, in conjunction with. Tiffany Esposito, the state rep is the chair, yes.
Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program, Councilwoman Carr?
No, I-
That should go away.
It really has nothing to do with our area, per se. We have so much attention to our waterways now, that to spend money to go to Charlotte, I think Benita Springs needs the money more.
May I ask, what exactly does that committee do as far as interacting with our city and our staff?
It's an external committee that usually a council member does attend, it's, it's mostly the waterways. We do have a connection in the waterways.
And they provide great information. You have a calendar in your mailbox, that's fabulous. They'll send out brochures, and it's fabulous information on water, it really is. I mean, I save all of their literature.
So, if I could ask, staff, do they recommend that we have a representative or not?
Just a little historical perspective, they recently actively worked against us on a water issue, and we were currently, they were in contract with us. Like, we were paying them, and they were actively working against our interest. So, to me, if I'm paying you and you're working against my interest, I don't have room for you in the stable.
Well, and I'm aware of that issue, what I'm wondering is, do we want to have somebody that's monitoring that?
Why pay them anything?
They want to come in and make a presentation.
Yeah, they can come see us.
I think what you're asking is probably a twofold question.[1646.83] I think what you're asking is probably a twofold question. One is, do we wanna participate in the program, which is $2,500 a year, and you currently have an invoice from them for that? Or whether you would like, their meetings are, are virtual and sometimes public, so, so someone as, if you wanted to be, act as a liaison, you could, as an external committee, just listen and.
Monitor.
Participate, but that would be.
As a non-paying member.
As a non-paying member, correct. Like, there's a twofold question there. Is, one is, we probably need direction from you all, and.
I think part of, I mean, if, if it's something you really would like to do, Nigel, I am completely supportive, but I think it's not only the money, I think it's the, the idea that you worked against us when we were paying you. We aren't even gonna send anybody to be there, so.
The old saying, keep your friends close and your enemies closer.
They have, there's no relationship correlation whereby we would ever need anything from them.
I make a motion, we don't pay them.
And I could tell you a little bit more about it.
Sorry, ma'am.
I make a motion, we don't pay them.
Second.
Each motion we're taking has a density.
All right, at the end.
Main motion, so, is, if there's support for that.
We'll just put that in there.
Just put that in there.
Coastal Advisory Committee, Councilman Corey.
Can we vote on that?
Well, no, I don't think, I think at the end, we can vote on that. What I was gonna suggest is, if, if Councilman Fuller would like more information, we can, the staff can give him more information, and, um, as well after the meeting.
And I appreciate that, but I think my original question was, what does staff think? Do we need to participate in that? Should we have somebody from council there? Is it, does it benefit the city? It's an opinion question, I know.
I, I would say that would be a political conversation, because it, it is ma, it's a makeup of elected officials. There hasn't been a staff present, presence on that. And it was more of an advocacy group for the coastal waterways and.
So, so the, the genesis of the National Estuary Program, uh, had a lot more involvement back many years ago, when, when several of the counties were engaged in litigation with the phosphate companies in the Bone Valley. So, they, they look at the watershed, starting from, like, the chain of lakes, all the way down to ending in Estero Bay. And so they're, 'cause it is all one connected watershed. The, the focus has traditionally been more towards the Charlotte Harbor, DeSoto, Peace River kind of area, and then more recently, there's been a shift towards, um, like, uh.
Heartland renamed itself.
Yeah, but there's, they changed the name to Heartland, something, so again, it's more shifting towards water quality issues coming, coming out of the north, and then there's been, there's been an element of, um, resiliency. But there is another element of resiliency, led by FGCU going through them, and so there, it has been unclear what their role is and what they've asked the city of. That, that has been very clear over the last couple of years of communications. We're, we're not clear what, what they're asking us for, or what our involvement is. That's the way I describe it.
The contribution is part of their annual report, and the, the 2,500 goes towards the production of their report back, and they, and they distribute that to each of the entities that are involved.
But as you shared, the meetings are public.
Correct.
And is the invoice for last year or for going forward for next year?
We just received, we paid last fiscal year, so this is an invoice, uh, that we received for this current fiscal year. That actually was, the invoice as liaison was, uh, addressed to me, but copied to Councilmember Carr as your liaison.
So my understanding is, we're not gonna participate?
That's.
And if there's no objection, then that'll be, that'll be taken out at the final vote.
Coastal Advisory Committee, Councilman Corey.
I don't know that we've ever met, but, uh. So I don't know, you know, I, I have no, uh, comments to make about it. Arlene, can you give us some background on it? Because I've never received any invitation to a meeting.
I believe that is, yeah, what Matt was suggesting. I think, I believe that's a county one, and it, it doesn't regularly meet, it's when projects become available, so you probably do need to maintain a liaison of when projects, you know, become available.
All right, well, that's fine.
We'll coordinate, maybe what we'll do is do some outreach to the county to see how we can get more participation.
And it's in Collier?
No, this is the Coastal Advisory.
Oh, okay.
Committee on Beaches and Shores.
But it says it is in Collier.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it, I think it has to do a lot, because the TDC is implicated on this, so it probably has to do with beach restoration.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay.
Collier County Liaison, Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Through Land and Water Trust, Councilwoman Caramba.
I'd like that one, actually. If nobody else does.
Estero Liaison.
ECC.
Councilwoman Corey.
I'll be glad to keep it.
Fire Control District Liaison, Councilwoman Carr.
I'm happy to keep it, but if our, our newest member would like, when our new council, first Monday evenings, first, second Monday.
Oh, yeah, you're attending to the fire people.
I don't know.
Um, I mean, as long as, I mean, I, I've thought about it, and I don't think there'd be any problem with.
Well, I'll keep it, and then you can come, and then if you wanna keep going, if you like it, then you can take it, okay? But I'll cover this.
I just wanna, I wanted to make sure there wasn't any, um, you know, conflict of interest between the two of any kind.
Yeah.
There isn't.
If you go, you have to clear it with.
I don't, I don't, how about, how about we do this, how about, I don't think there'd be a conflict of interest from a liaison position, so I, I'd recommend, uh, Councilwoman Bogas, if you're interested, go ahead, and, and if something crops up.
You're okay with that?
Okay, yeah, love it. You've been to the.
Florida League of Cities Liaison, Councilman Purdon, and was Councilwoman Gibson.
I'm gonna miss him at those things.
That is the state, correct?
That's the state. Local is Fred.
And Laura.
And Laura. So, somebody's gotta join, it's, yeah, you gotta drive to, it's normally Orlando, but I think there's one in Tali annually, but that's it.
Each month?
No, quarterly.
No, no, no.
It's like quarterly. It's not bad. But I mean, it is a regional trip, it's not, it's never down here.
I'll do it. Unless, Nigel, you wanna do it?
Well, I'm there anyway.
Oh.
So I could do it, so, but it doesn't make any difference. It's, it's a vote.
Good to hang out with me, I mean, it's fun. I'm a blast.
You, you need to have two for this one, because this one, you have to have a voting and a voting alternate for the quarterly.
I'll be there as the voting state member, but we need an alternate, and then on the local level, we have two.
Fred has a different seat, you can't be the alternate, because you, you have a seat.
Or he gives up the seat, and Nigel takes it.
Quarterly.
Do we need an alternate? I'll serve as the alternate.
Okay, so for the, the city.
Jamie might like it, actually. She might like, it's, it's, for somebody new, you get to meet a lot of people around the whole state.
Well, Nigel might.
Well, Jamie, I'll, I know a lot of people around the state already. Jamie, if you wanna do it, more than happy to.
Either way.
So it's quarterly, a couple days during the week?
Yeah, it's normally like, it starts like a Wednesday, and it goes to Friday, or Saturday. Actually, it actually goes to Saturday. It's normally, it'll be like Wednesday to Saturday.
It usually goes to a Saturday morning meeting, and then in the afternoon. But it's, it's usually two or three days.
And Wednesday's fluff, if you go up Thursday, you're fine.
And you and Nigel can talk about it. You could bring it back up, saying it didn't, when you looked into it, it didn't work with your schedule.
Okay.
So it's not like committed forever. Pencil.
Will you be my backup?
Sunshine and Val, was the you two working out this problem?
No, we would do that through staff.
No, that would be brought up back to the council, and then you.
I'm happy to go back in the bullpen.
So what was the final on Florida League of Cities?
Jesse?
I'd, I'd make a recommendation, because I've been at the meetings where the primary couldn't participate in that vote, the alternate couldn't, and they had to go on emergency and get me registered to vote. Nothing wrong with having an alter, alternate one and an alternate two. They'll probably be there anyway.
Okay. Makes sense, right?
So we're suggesting two alternates, is that what?
Yeah.
Jamie being one.
Who's the other one?
Who's the second, or Nigel being one?
That'll be me.
I guess.
Okay.
Number two. And then based on if it does, maybe the first, if it's quarterly, maybe you guys split it two and two, or something like that. And then if one of you loves it, then, you know, or you can arm wrestle for it, if you both love it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fort Myers Beach Liaison, Councilwoman Carr.
I'll keep it, 'cause I see him, um, at, uh, MPO, so, 'cause we don't actually meet.
Horizon Council, was Councilwoman Caramba?
I would do that.
I would like it. I go.
Go ahead, that's fine. Nope, go ahead, that's fine, go ahead.
Is it okay?
That's fine.
I love it.
Human Services Advisory Council, Councilwoman Carr.
That I never heard, never did, nothing.
Uh, we do, we do need a, a listed liaison, though, because if, um, there's grant opportunities, that's, for housing administration, that's a committee that's done through.
Do they call you then? Because nobody has gotten in touch with me.
Well, they, if there's a vote being, but we'll check into it.
Okay.
But we do need a liaison.
Okay, I, I would do it, or Nigel, would you?
Arlene, when do they meet, and where?
Uh, it's in Lee, they meet in Lee County. For a little while, they had done some virtual meetings, um, but it's probably in person now, and, um, it, uh, council member, um, it, it used to, they used to have more regular meetings, but then after COVID, it's settled down. So we'll, we'll get with Lee County staff and find out when their next meetings are.
If you want, I'll do it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if council wants.
Yeah.
If nobody else wants it, I'll, okay, I'll take it.
Lee County Sheriff's Office Liaison, Councilman Purdon.
Yeah, I'd like to keep that.
Metropolitan Planning Organization, the two voting members, I have Councilwoman Carr and Councilwoman Forbes.
Wanna keep it?
Yeah, I've gotta keep it, because I'm the voting rep to the state MPO, too.
Metropolitan Planning Organization Alternates, I have Councilman Purdon, Councilman Corey.
Chris can have it in totality, if you'd like.
Well, I think, though, it's an alternate. Is this like a different meeting, or is this the executive meeting, Fred?
Executive meeting is by, I'm, I'm on the executive committee, and then.
Do you see where, where I'm looking on this sheet?
I, I believe the history of that is, we had two, because at some point in time, there was a chance that folks were.
Like Cape Coral has more votes than we do. Fort Myers has more votes than we do. We have two, most of the people have, like, Sanibel has one. We have two because of population base.
So if Fred wasn't able to make it, I would call the alternate and say, could you come up?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we should definitely have an alternate.
You need at least a minimum of one alternate, yes.
I'll be happy to do it.
I'm good with, maybe, and Chris, I think he would be great there.
Regional Planning Council?
Regional Planning Council is Councilman Forbes.
No, that's me.
No, it's Councilmember Purdon.
That's me. Um, I'm just gonna be honest about this committee. It is a, it is a, it is an organization, it's a feckless fledgling organization that really has no authority. Everybody's quit paying, so it's kinda dissolving, but the problem now is, they just recently got some type of grant position that's gonna have something to do with the storms, so now it's like, you don't wanna walk away, even though it's a mess.
I do wanna clarify, too, is that, uh, we, we had an invoice of $16,424, and I believe that's when we played quarterly.
Actually, I think we need to discuss that. No, I don't think, no, I don't think we should do that. I, I mean, I was participating because I felt like there was change that was coming within the organization. Commissioner McDaniel down in Collier was one of the folks who was kinda leading it, and I've known him for a long time, I thought, but the reality is, there's no authority for the organization at all. We have to pay a ton of money to be in it. There are a lot of, uh, there's so much crossover and zero actual chain of command or authority for the organization. So you're paying to be part of a group that really kinda talks about stuff. But the problem is, again, the, the only issue is that they're gonna be somewhat involved in facilitating money in some way. I don't know that that's enough to pay $10,000 to be part of it. I honestly don't. I would, I, as the representative, I hate to lose the committee, but to pay $10,000, I would say no, 'cause I've been to the meetings, and it's a waste. That's, that's ten, I could spend $10,000 eight, a million ways better than that.
It has no authority?
No.
Basically, it's a government chamber of commerce?
Yes, then.
Statutorily, they used to have authority, they had to review our comprehensive plan amendments, and there was a comment period, then that changed out of Florida statutes, um, and that was no longer a requirement. So, at some point in time, I do recall, we have to go up to the meeting and kind of plead our bid of our comp plan changes and our ear amendments and.
And there, yeah. And there was all kinds of stuff on votes and stuff similar to MPO, but it's, at the end of the day, they have no authority. So, we're paying to be part of the organization, there's really, it's just.
Let's save our taxpayers some money.
Isn't it true?
Amen, I make a motion.
Doesn't Lee County, they don't participate?
Lee County dropped, Collier County dropped, um, and I wanna say regionally, I mean, I'm on there, and it's, the only ones that I know regionally, there's a, a guy from LaBelle, and there is me and Bill McDaniel. That's, regionally, that's it. All the rest of them are from other places, and honestly, there's, there was two people at the last one that I went to.
I don't hear anybody disagreeing, let's save our taxpayers $10,000.
All right.
I thought you said 16. 16,000. No, 16,000 in a year, it's, the payments are quarterly.
Yep.
So are we removing that committee?
Yep.
And not funding it?
Yes.
Southwest Florida League of Cities, Councilman Forbes.
Yeah, I've gotta stay on it, 'cause I'm the immediate past presence, and I'm on the executive committee.
Southwest Florida League of Cities, an alternate.
I'd like to keep it.
Councilwoman Carr.
Like to keep that.
TDC, Tourist Development Council, was, was Councilwoman Gibson's?
I would, uh, no, actually, no.
Do they meet? Do they?
The TDC?
Yeah.
I'd like to be a representative.
Okay.
Please.
Great.
West Coast Inland Navigation District, Councilwoman Carr.
So that is the WCIND, we annually receive grant funds from that program for Waterways Patrol.
So, I mean, they haven't reached out and nothing?
No, they've been, they've been doing their grant process remotely, so they email the grant application, we've been turning in, you, you've been approving them on consent agenda items, so.
Wonder Gardens Liaison, Councilwoman Corey.
I'd like to keep that.
And last is YMCA, Councilman Purdon.
If anybody would like it, you're more than welcome. There's a lot of, you know, I think it has, there's positives to it, if anybody would like to be part of it.
Is it worth the city's while? I mean, I think.
Um, no, I think it is. No, I think what it, I, I think our relationship to YMCA is one of the most valuable relationships we have as a community, is specific to the board. I feel like it's something that I could get the Cliff Notes on later in an email, and it wouldn't be there for an hour and a half.
And we've been, we've invested our money in YMCA, have we not?
Yes. We have mutual partnerships with them, they, we built the, the courts out there and all that stuff, I mean, in the aftercare, in the sports, so we're like tied to them, and the new executive, two years now, executive director is awesome. So like, our relationship, I'm all in on the relationship with them. I just, uh, from a, an ROI in regards to me actually being at their meetings, I don't see that it's there.
Do the minutes they keep help?
They're non-profits.
The things that they're even talking about aren't, think, the ninety percent of the things don't relate to the city in any way, shape, or form. Again, it's a, they do things that are, they're feel-good, nice things, and it's a good group of old-time Benita folks who love it. But as far as actually doing things that move the ball for the city, I don't feel it. But somebody else, fresh blood, might like it, so.
When do they meet?
Uh, it's like once a month, I think.
Friday mornings at 8:00 AM, third Friday. But what if we asked them to come in and present, or, or, or to call us and say, could you make this meeting?
What? You have to attend all the meetings? I don't.
No. I can do it, I, I was on their board for years, when I got elected to city council, and I didn't, I couldn't serve, 'cause that would be voting sometimes to give money to the Y, but I can be their liaison.
And if there's an interest, we can always.
And then I could be backup.
Ask them to do a presentation on their programs. Annually. Since you do have contractual relations. Okay. So we, do we have each committee and the direction of any committees we're eliminating and eliminating funding for?
I don't recall Corkscrew Regional Ecosystem Watershed being discussed.
No, no, we did.
We did, okay.
So that would be one big motion?
One motion.
Yep. Second. Oh, motion, motion to approve?
Second. With Jamie.
Oh, call, please.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Fuller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilman Bogas.
Aye.
Okay.
The next item I have before you is discussion regarding the city's participation in FEMA's HMGP program. What, what occurred last time during Hurricane Irma is there is a disaster recovery committee that's created out of all the jurisdictions within Lee County, and then any other entity, utility, that has an opportunity to receive FEMA funds as a program for resiliency or hardening. So, so BSU is eligible, the sheriff's office is eligible, um, FPNL is eligible. It's a committee made up of staff. In the past, typically, myself, Matt, and Ellie have attended those meetings. Then we work in conjunction with all the other entities to rank projects. We're very mindful of the situation that Fort Myers Beach is dealing with, as well as Sanibel, but it is important for us to at least list projects, because you cannot receive funding through this program unless you are listed, um, actually, in the project program. We were, been very fortunate to be successful with many of our, um, projects that we listed. They were lower ranked, and we still received funding for those projects. We anticipate that that's something that could happen again, because how we're gonna advocate is in, is in compassion to our neighbors as well. But we wanted some direction from you all. We discussed at the previous meeting, we wanted to continue to ask for funding for the projects we currently have on track and receive funding for. I did get a clarification from Lee County, they're gonna be working with their consultant to give us more direction, but we can ask for additional funding for the programs that we have under this new declaration. We would like to suggest that we already have home buyout and home elevation, and that we offer that citywide for any opportunities for someone who's a repetitive loss property that may not be located within the Quinn-Down Imperial. Continue, Asko, asking for monies for the infrastructure and for. Continue, Asko, asking for monies for the infrastructure and for home elevation and, and buyout in Quinn-Down and Imperial as we already have that project area. But we would like to add some discussion. I'll let Matt clarify. With the funds received by the governor's office to extend the drainage project on East Terry, there's a natural look to the north, and I'll let Matt discuss that.
So, like Arlene mentioned, we were successful with the last storm in, in really funding projects we didn't anticipate getting funding for. And this is kinda the, the approach we would be taking with this project I was gonna mention in adding it to the list. We're not, we're not looking to advocate for it to be, you know, the number one ranked in Lee County because we are mindful of what happened to our neighbors in Fort Myers Beach and Pine Island and Sanibel. But given the, the fact that we've had success where we're not really competing, you know, but, but there's enough funding or an opportunity comes along, we, we thought that a project, a drainage project along Morton Avenue, north of East Terry Street, would be one worth consideration. There was overtopping of the roadside ditches during Irma there. There was some minor road damage that we experienced, and it is a major kind of spine drainage conveyance. But really, the thinking was driven from the fact that we have sixteen point eight million dollars that we'll be putting to work along East Terry Street from Benita Grand Drive to Imperial Parkway, and even possibly to Old Forty-One that the governor had, had provided for. So, you know, with, with that being a drainage project, and there being kinda known drainage issues there, and it being a kind of a major, it's, it's not a little capillary, so to speak. It's, you know, it's, it's kind of a major artery for drainage along Morton. The thought was, well, maybe we would add this to the list, and should funding become available? If it did become available, this program does require a twenty-five percent match. So, you know, there'd be a decision point much further down the road, but we thought maybe adding Morton would be something worth considering. It has not come from a, a large public outcry. It's, it's just us trying to be creative, and if there are other projects, if, if the opportunity arises, you know, we, we would ask council to, to let us know.
If there's other projects that the community, that you've heard from constituents, that you want us to pursue or look if it meets qualification, this is our time to do that. We're hoping that, we're, they've asked us to provide the list of projects prior to you meeting again. So we wanted to at least advance these projects and continue hopefully to keep on that process if there's more projects available. And should, should we move forward with this, we would, we would add Morton to the discussions we have. We do workshops with you all on infrastructure so that the public can be more involved, participate. We'd have to talk about some, some cost estimates, and all that would be discussed during your budget preparation.
Arlene, you talked about citywide for the, the buyout and the elevation?
Correct.
Is that in stone, or are we just applying for that, or?
No, we need to see with their, with the consultants that are on board with Lee County. And then you've just also approved a slew of consultants that we can utilize as well for disaster recovery. But what we didn't want to do is pigeonhole ourselves into just Queen, the Quinn, Imperial Downs. If there's another opportunity for a property that is a repetitive loss property, we would like to offer that opportunity to buy, buy that property or, or help with a home elevation.
What is, what is a repeat, what qualifies as a repeat flooding property?
That's someone that's filed more than one flood insurance claim, but I think, A, there may be restrictions where we, we have to tie it to where the storm surge came. I don't know that they'll allow us to be citywide. So we, we may have to provide a geographic area of where the storm surge affected, which that's essentially Spring Creek area all along the Imperial River, and then obviously the beaches. But I think one of the things to, to kinda get your head around is, we haven't done it really, but home elevation. You know, that we're talking about two projects. In this case, home elevation may be important. You know, as people start to recover and are faced with the fifty percent rule. Now, this, this is federal money. It takes years to be able to harness it, but we're, we're, again, it's kind of a strategy of having an iron in the fire. If you don't have it in there, you don't have the opportunity.
Let's go for, yes, sir.
Question, how many miles, if it's appropriate, miles of roadways do we have in residential areas in Benita Springs that are not owned by the city?
I don't know. I, I don't know that answer off the top of my head.
Any ballpark?
No.
No, okay. Would that be something we'd wanna know?
It's something we can probably figure out, but I, I just don't know it off the top of my head.
I'm just looking, some of the flooding that we had was definitely in those areas.
And it also sounds like if we include Morton, it's a more efficient way of using the money. You've got all the equipment there and just finish the thing.
I don't wanna give you any false sense of hope that this is a guarantee, and it may be that Morton's number is so large that when you really look at it with all the other projects we have, if we had the opportunity, you might say, yeah, we're not interested because of the match. No. But yes, that's, that was the thing.
What about Riverside Park? Would that count? Cuz we're gonna turf down, right?
I think we're trying to be mindful of what happened to our neighbors to the north. Obviously, we were well affected.
You don't wanna ask too much.
Maybe not for park projects.
But you see, I always think that Benita is left out of the discussion of Ian.
But the purpose of this money is hazard, the grant program is hazard mitigation grant program. So we're, we're trying to mitigate hazards for folks, if that helps.
So what about removal of the piles?
And piles, and the boats, and the cars. So we're working with the state on that project. So that, so we have, through, through our staff, we've worked with the state of Florida to remove the vessels and vehicles, and then there are two different agencies of the state, and then one is looking at the actual debris that's in the mangroves, if it's not vessel-related or real property.
And the money that funds that work is, that's recovery money. This is, how do you prevent it from happening again, or prevent something from happening again? Hence, home elevation.
A hardening, a hardening or resiliency.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very good.
So I think if we could have a motion that you're comfortable with us advancing.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve what staff has recommended for this.
I'll second that. For vote, uh...
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fulick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
And then the last item I have is just some information, some update information on Hurricane Ian recovery. I did wanna make sure that everyone was aware that the DRC that is located at the old Benita Rec Center is gonna be closed for December twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And then they'll be open the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, but they'll be closed again the thirtieth, thirty-first, the first and the second, to reopen on the third. Also, you all should have received a packet of information from our finance director. We, we are actually doing a presentation on that tonight, but if you have any questions or you'd like some individual responses from us, myself, Lisa's available, and Derek, we can set a call with you to go over any of that. In essence, they should, everyone should be paying their current taxes as the bill is due. This only affects the January, next year's taxes. So there's more to come. But we have a preliminary definition, you'll see in that presentation, of what the affected properties may be. There's probably more, we understand there'll be more clarification and more discussion during the general legislative session this spring as well. And there has been some discussion about helping to replenish any funds the local governments aren't, are, are at loss for those during that time of any delays or any exemptions that are provided through that bill. And then Matt's just gonna give a brief update on where we are with debris removal within the city.
So we, we've moved about two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three cubic yards picked up, just about. And they've started, I haven't been up there, but my brother texts me every morning about the trash pile. I, they've really, in earnest, started hauling the, the construction demolition out of the Coconut Point Road.
You can tell.
Yeah. So, so that's, you know, that effort is in full swing to haul it off to its final destination. We will, when we come back from the new year, we will start publicly announcing that, you know, the debris operations are gonna wind down probably the middle of January. Obviously, for the flood damaged areas, we'll keep an eye on, but for the rest of the city, we'll, we'll probably start putting out announcements that it's, it's closing. And quite honestly, even in the flood damaged areas, most of the folks have, through the recovery process, you know, their debris has been picked up, but we will kinda keep that still on the iron. But as we come into the end of January, February, we'll probably be looking to, to finish that operation. I do wanna provide a couple of other updates. We, our traffic signals are maintained by Lee County traffic signals through contractual agreement, and they have been working to assess all of the damages that the storm did to the signals, both the ones that are theirs, plus the ones they maintain for us. And they are in the process of applying for, for even the city's signals for reimbursement through the Federal Highway Administration and/or FDOT, the Florida Department of Transportation, for repairs that are in excess or estimated to be, really estimated to be, in excess of five thousand dollars. And if, if they're successful with federal highway dollars coming in, we would be required to pay a twenty percent match on that. Right now, we're estimated to have about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars worth of damage to city signals. So our, our match will be somewhere around thirty-six thousand. Federal Highway might deny some of the requests, you know, so that, that number could be a little larger, but, but that is coming. They are working on it, and they're, they're trying to get some money on our behalf. They will not reimburse for anything underneath five thousand, and right now, we only seem to have one, one repair that's underneath a five thousand dollar expense. I guess the good news is they're pretty badly damaged, but...
Our, the debris pickup is separate from Lee County, as far as when?
Oh, yes, yes.
I mean, like, I got a call yesterday.
Good point, yeah.
I got a call last night. He said, well, I finally got somebody clean out
Yeah.
by downstairs and put it out by the road, and they're gonna pick it up. I said, I, I think we're gonna go until we, until we all get it picked up.
Well, we, we are, I mean, they're...
An email from Lee County saying, you know, I can't figure that out.
Lee County has, I think there's been some confusion.
Yeah.
I think it was a week ago. They, it's similar to what I said, in areas that weren't affected by flood damage or storm surge, they did start to shut down their debris operations, I believe, out east in the eastern parts of the county in Lehigh. We got a lot of calls where folks thought that it was everywhere. They haven't subsided their operation. I don't know their timeframe for winding down. I imagine it'll follow something similar to what I'm talking about.
What I read in the email this afternoon was December sixteenth, they were gonna shut down.
That was...
And they moved it to January third for a different area. I can't figure out Lee County, that's why we're in a city.
The December sixteenth date, to my knowledge, was really, really out east in the, in the areas that weren't flood damaged. I can tell you what we're doing follows along with what Astero is basically putting out as well, where we're trying to shut down the areas that didn't have the flood damage. But truthfully, even in our flood damaged areas, the rate that, that it's coming out is, it's not there. It's, it's slowing down.
But what about the new debris that is piled up on Hickory Boulevard near Lover's Key? I mean, it's...
Fort Myers Beach is debris.
Is it?
Yeah.
Just Fort Myers?
You mean, you mean...
Fort Myers Beach.
But the Lover's Key Park.
I'm surprised they moved it so far south.
It's not ours.
Well, they moved it to our area.
Are you talking Hickory Boulevard, or are you talking Benita Springs Causeway? Benita Beach Causeway?
Anyway, they know where I'm talking about, so it's, they're, they're working on it.
There's still a lot of stuff on Hickory Boulevard.
I can't speak to the, they have every right to have their debris at the Lover's Key State Park, if that's the piles that you're talking about. It's been a while since I've been out there, but that is Fort Myers Beach's recovery effort, and I am not aware of where they are. But if you've been to Fort Myers Beach, they have a long way to go. And so that, please do not hold any of the timelines I've given for, for our project to that pile of trash. It's not trash, it's debris.
It's debris.
Let's be good neighbors for a little while longer.
You, you, you have experience with that pile.
I put that pile there during Hurricane Charlie. Please do not hold it against me.
Back in Charlie.
I worked for Fort Myers Beach back then.
The last thing, I wanna clarify, just remind everyone that the city facilities are, are going to be closed this Friday, December twenty-third, through the weekend. We're also closed on Monday, and then we will be open for three days, and then we'll be closed again on December thirtieth, and reopening on Tuesday, the third. And as a reminder, we did cancel the January fourth. There is no pending zoning, so at this time, we're not asking for any special meeting to be called afterwards. So our next meeting that we would have, the city council, will be January eighteenth at nine AM. And, and lastly, myself and Matt will be out of the office next week, but you're, we're available by phone should you need. I'm available by phone should you need. I'm available by phone. Matt is taking a little, but, but we'll be around if you need us, but you will have sort of a slim staff net for the three days next week. So just be kind to us as we're gonna be...
The city hall's gonna be open except...
For three days, those three days in between, yes. And permitting will be open as well for those three days.
Okay, so everybody's taking their vacation hopefully, the two weeks, two weeks vacation that staff gets, right? Every staff gets two weeks vacation?
No, that, we have actual holidays built into the employment agreements, so.
Okay, well anyways.
Okay. Public comment or council items? I don't know. What are we gonna do?
What are you talking about? Are you the mayor? You're not the mayor. Okay, public comment, anybody? Gentlemen, you're here all night. You have something to say, please? Come to the podium. Oh, boy, that's hard sitting, I know. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bruce Ackerman. Along with Barry Frieden, we're here this evening. We're representing the Joint Committee for Rails and Trails at the Vines Community and Astero Country Club. I've met some of you folks who have taken us up on our tour invitation. We've written to each of you, I hope you got our invitations, to take the tour because you're shortly going to have the opportunity to have a presentation for a rail-to-trail proposal where the MPO is going to ask you to approve their presentation, which will run and bisect the Vines Community. So to the extent that we've offered you the tour, if you didn't get our invitation, I will wait after the meeting. Please come up to me. We'd like to schedule it. I recognize this is not a good time of the year to take your time away from other valuable things and family, but your next meeting isn't till January eighteenth. We got plenty of time even after the first of the year. If you can make the time, I'd love to show it to you. This is truly an item where picture is worth a thousand words because you can't understand the impact of what the MPO has on this plant without coming to see how it impacts us. We have two railroad crossings, vehicle crossings in our community, each one of which has a hundred thousand vehicles go across it per year, and it's a huge impact. So I urge you to accept the invitation. Second reason why I'm here, and I'll be brief, I sent the clerk a resolution, a draft resolution, and I sent it to the mayor also. Last week, I emailed him. The resolution essentially says that when you do take action, accepting the presentation of the MPO Rails-to-Trails report, that you approve it only up to Astero Parkway. We've presented the exact same resolution to the village of Astero who accepted the resolution, and we hope that they will act on it positively, and we hope that you will as well. For the record, I'm gonna present a hard copy of the draft resolution, which is, we would hope that you would do what's necessary to consider it and adopt it as you genuinely need.
Do you mind repeating everything you just said because you're away from the microphone?
Okay. I presented, so it's part of the record, I presented the hard copy of the resolution to, to the borough, to the city clerk, so she can make it a part of the minutes and of the record, present a copy to the city council members. I would urge you to take the tour, and then you'll be ready to adopt that resolution, provided there is ever funding for this rail-to-trail, because the railroad is asking a hundred million dollars at the moment. But whether it's a trail that we develop together, the village and the city, up Old Forty-One and through Astero to Astero Parkway... together, the village and the city, up Old Forty-One and through Astero to Astero Parkway, or a different trail, we urge you to stop the trail for the moment at Astero Parkway, and not impact the only gated golf community in the country that would have such a trail go through it. All right? Any questions? I'm here. Yes, sir.
To be clear, I, is, you guys are not in favor of the Rails Trail?
We're totally in favor of it, just not to bisect our community.
Okay, so you're in favor of it, not through your community. So there would be a, okay. Logistically, I see some issues with the totality of the length of how it's set up or supposed to be set up. Obviously, there's a number of issues, because there's, there's more than one property owner as well. So you have a myriad of issues, and you have a number of municipalities, so there's, it's a long-term thing, but I think it's a thing that everybody kind of, uh, has been very supportive of, so I would like to understand how exactly it can cut off the portion that goes through your community and continue as it is.
I'll tell you how. First of all, if you go from Benita Beach Road to Astero Parkway, if you go on the rail, it's between ten and twelve miles long. That would be a heck of a linear park for everybody to use.
Yeah.
At the Village of Astero meeting, we actually had bikers get up and say, "I'm in favor of it, but I won't use it, because I'm a serious biker, and I, that's not enough for me." And they can't ride that fast while people are jogging and walking and having baby carriages, because it's a park. This is the idea of having a linear park. Ten or twelve miles up to Astero Parkway, frankly, is a lot, and for those that want to go further, there's already a bike path down Astero Parkway, there's already a bike path up Three Oaks, they have to build along Alaco to get back to John Yarborough Park, I believe it's called, up in Fort Myers, and it would connect up for the, the biker that needs to go more than eleven miles up and eleven miles back, twenty-two miles.
Okay, well, where?
But if you come and take the tour, I will show you and illustrate to you exactly how all that works, and why it shouldn't go through our community.
Appreciate it.
I'd love to see you there, Councilman Purdon.
Yes, sir. Uh, where's this hundred million dollars coming from? And who's going to maintain this?
We're not supposed to dialogue.
Well, according to-
We're not supposed to have dialogue with-
Public comment.
Yeah.
It asks me, "Any questions?" I'm not allowed to-
Mr. Mayor? When we get to the council reports, I'll report on some information on this, but I don't want to get into it now.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I hope to see you afterwards, if you want to take the tour, I'm going to wait and take your booking.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to open back up council member reports, we already, we already passed that part of the agenda. Oh, okay. Or do you want to finish?
Number thirteen. Fred, you said you got the MPO report.
I have pertinent information on this. Um, I've talked to Donald Scott, the executive director of MPO, and he has said repeatedly to me, they do not want us to approve or reject anything. All they want to do is have us acknowledge receipt of the presentation and the report, because by the time somebody comes up with the money, and that could be a long time, if ever, there'll be so many changes to the roads that cross, the railroad crossing, even though they're abandoned, that they'll really need to do, touch up to study at each of those intersections. And also, there's at least one other golf course community that's got a railroad bisecting it too, and that's the Brooks. So we do not have to take any action to approve or disapprove, that's, and that'll be announced early on, and when he gets here with the presentation.
Thank you very much, Fred. You all right, Laura?
Now, I would say this, it's worth going to see what he wants you to come see.
Absolutely.
Okay, any more public comment? About where you're home? Any, anything else? We're done.